Official timekeeper, are we five o'clock yet?
Four fifty-nine.
I second the time.
There you go. Motion passed. Well, the big departments are here, so that's good.
This is true.
Fab five.
Wow.
All right, we're gonna silence this bad boy.
Well, it's such a cozy group, I'm sure we'll have a real lively discussion today.
That means it'll go by fast.
Hopefully.
Oh, please do.
Did I say that one?
Yeah, I think it was.
Okay.
I sensed enthusiasm from the participants.
Or agreeance to get out. We need to leverage this.
All right, Dave.
Is it time?
Time.
Okay. Stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Well, welcome, everybody.
Thanks for having us.
Yes, round two. I see some familiar faces and I see some new faces that are filling in new department head shoes. And this is gonna be an interesting year. Anyway, welcome, everybody. Thank you for coming out. I just wanted to let everybody know that this is round two of, or well, actually, I should say our second year of working as an intermediary, I should say, as a fact between the department heads and the boss. But the department heads are still driving the show. And we'll get into that a little bit later. But I just wanted to make sure everybody was welcome and looking forward to year two of developing the budget. I think last year was fairly successful. I don't think there were a couple of hiccups, but as a rule, I think it went very, very smoothly. And I think from the selectmen's standpoint, I think a big monkey was taken off of their back so they could get other important stuff done too. So, with that, let me go to the next turn. And I take this one.
Yes, Luke.
So I can see. Sorry, Ron.
And what I'd like to do at this time is give the chair or the floor over to the selectmen to say a few words before we kick off the budget for twenty twenty-four. And with that, Sean.
You know, thank you, you know, thank you to the FAC. Melissa Max joined the team this year. She's gonna look to help lighten their load, you know, take on, you know, a department or two and or work with them however she can in order to help the process run a little bit smoother. So thanks for answering the call and joining the team.
Okay.
You know, as Dennis had mentioned, this is, we're going on our second year of this process for the budgeting and with the same FAC members with the addition of Melissa. They worked diligently over the, you know, you know, once the budget wrapped up in March, April, to start trying to refine the process for a couple of months and go through some of the feedback that they've received from you guys last year, the ones that were in your positions of ways that we could do things better for this budget season. So we're excited for that. And, you know, as always, they're not a wall between you all and the Board of Selectmen. They're helping us. They're like a tool for us to better understand your budgets. Because the amount of time that they're able to put in with you on, you know, time that works out better for your schedules and their schedules and talk about your departments and what your current needs are, where you'd like to see your departments go. They, you know, in the past, we'd only get about a half hour meeting with each department or hour meeting, like to go through their budgets and then, you know, kind of make decisions real quick and off the cuff. But I know these gentlemen and this lady will put in, you know, numerous hours like for each department and with each department head, gaining a better understanding of where you're at now, where you'd like to be for your department. Naturally, we'd like to, you know, see as much savings as possible. So that is an aspect of this whole thing, is to see if there's, you know, a better way that we can work together as a town office in order, like, can we pool resources in some way in order to lower, you know, different types of costs? Or, you know, brainstorming some as, like, some of those aspects. But in general, we're fully aware of the rising costs that are around us. We're fully aware of the, you know, the struggles that you all face with your employees that you have, you know, within your departments and retention. These are all, you know, things that we're looking to help, what is it? Fortify, like, you know, going forward and plan for the future. You know, we made some, you know, significant moves with the police department over the last couple of years. I know more is probably needed. You know, and we're looking to enhance, like, any of the benefit packages or whatever types of ideas that you guys have that'll help retain employees. That's why we went heavy on training last year, tried to, you know, really encourage training for each department. Because, you know, if you guys know better what's expected of you, you'll be happier in your, your jobs and the job performance will go up. So please, please, you know, you know, work with them and, you know, allow them to understand your departments as much as you can. Because I know that last year, like, a lot of the information that we had and they had gathered for us that we reviewed was invaluable. We'll utilize a similar system this year. And the number ones, you know, being this is what is at the core of what it takes to run your department. Number two, what you think you'd like to add to it for X, Y, Z, like whatever the reasoning is. And the number threes, it'd be really nice to have this. Or this is where we'd like to go in the future. So it'll kind of give us that look a year or two in advance of where you're looking to take your departments and what, you know, you're gonna be looking to expend money on and what we're gonna be looking to request from the community. You know, this is a really important process and a really important tool in order to communicate back to the community. Because we're going to be looking to add more detail, you know, than ever before. Like, instead of just having the raw budget sheets, we'll have like justifications at the different meetings too for the different departments and the requests that they have. Another item that's gonna be added this year is the CIP. We're gonna be looking to, you know, have the FAC gather financial data on all of the capital improvements plans that each department has. They've been working with Planning Board in order to find some type of balance between the Planning Board's role and what the FAC's role can be. So that may be a little bit quirky this year, but hopefully we'll be able to smooth that out for next year. So it'll be a little bit easier because we're still looking to, you know, gather more information on the different types of capital improvements plans that you guys want, like for your departments or what you need. You know, because as you know, those accounts are used as savings accounts year after year in order to fund the replacement of expensive gear or equipment for the different departments. So, you know, the more information that you can give these guys and lady, the better. And they'll help us all work together in order to, you know, attain your goals and the goals for better serving our community. With that, I'll turn it back over to Dennis.
I can just add that first one there, emphasis on maintaining current tax rate. I think a reminder that this isn't the selectmen against the departments. And whatever your budget is, doesn't impact the selectmen. It impacts your neighbor. Just wanted to add that.
Good. I would also add on that same bullet is, and like we did last year, we need to have a baseline to start out with. And we've always used the current year as the baseline. And right now, that's the 2023 budget. So we're looking at that as our starting point now. In some cases, you may not have as much requirement next year. In some cases, you may have more. But the 2023 budget is the starting point as we go forward to build the 2024 budget. So I think everybody understands where we're at in that, right? Okay, good. The selectmen told the FAC last year, try to avoid making comparisons to other towns because they are all different. They all have different requirements. So it's just, so we don't get into any heated discussions about, well, we don't have as much as Ridge or Peterborough or something like that. It's just kind of baseline it somewhere. And then we'll work based on what our real requirements are to get that out, present it to the selectmen at the end of our budget development. The other thing that I wanted to mention, and this is something we ran into a little bit last year, one of the hiccups, but it's correctable, is it's really important that whenever the FAC reaches out to each of the departments, that we get timely responses and acknowledgement that we're trying to make contact with you. It's really difficult sometimes when we send out an email or we, you know, make a telephone call and we don't get a response. It's exasperating. So be cognizant of that and try to be very reactive and responsive to our contact with you so that we can get that ball rolling, get our business done, get it out of the way, and then you can get on with your business and us too. So just a point on that. One of our charters is, of course, to give periodic updates to the selectmen. That kind of takes the monkey off the department's back so you don't have to keep identifying, oh, what about this or what about that? Usually, many times last year, when there were questions, the selectmen would reach out to the FAC and ask a question. And generally, we had the answer because of our conversations with the department heads. And that make it, made it real easy. Would we have all the answers? No, obviously, but it does help a little bit in that regard too. As Sean mentioned, we're going to add in the capital improvement plan. Right now, we have, this doesn't, by the way, doesn't apply to all the departments right now. At some point in time, maybe every department will be reached out and touched on this. But right now, we're trying to get a handle on the vehicles. We may add more items to that as we roll through the year to get a better handle, such as technology, communication. But right now, the big ticket items are our vehicles. Got a lot of money tied up into them. Takes a lot of money to keep them maintained and replaced. So we need to anticipate not only what our annual budget is, but to anticipate in a future year outlook to see what our funding requirements are so we don't have any oops or gotchas or whatever. So we can sort of cross level that throughout the years to anticipate what our big ticket item expenses will be. As I said, right now, the vehicles don't apply to all departments, but other departments do have communication requirements, technology requirements that are all part of the CIP. That will eventually be rolled up into one big picture. And then we'll work that with the planning committee. And I know Joe and Dee have been working already quite a bit on that now. Okay, next turn. As mentioned, the, the FAC was appointed by the boss last year. Just to point out. Oh, first of all, how many of you here today are working a budget for the first time as a department head? One, two. Okay, well, that's not too bad. Okay, so since you weren't involved in it directly last year, the engagement is just going to be informal interfacing with each other to identify what the requirements are, document that. And we'll be massaging that for the next couple of weeks because we'll have questions when we get inputs and we just have questions on it because we need to explain some things that may not be fully understood by a simple amount or whatever on, on an accounting line. But we have Mitch, Mitch, and we've got Joe, we've got Melissa, we've got Luke and myself. I guess I got everybody, right? Okay. So as Sean mentioned, Melissa's a new ad. So this is gonna be a first time for her. And a couple of you will be working with Melissa. I know that emergency management, vital statistics, there's another one. I'll get to that in a minute. Yeah. So we'll be working through that. It will be, you know, a learning expense or experience for some of you on both sides of the equation, whether you're a department head or whether you're a FAC member. But there's enough experience within this body that we'll be able to smooth it out if we have any questions or issues or things that need to be worked out. Again.
I'm sorry.
I put mine on mute. So what we're gonna do is we're gonna take this input and we're going to collect this, review it, massage it with you, and then we'll put it all together for the Board of Selectmen to review. Eventually, heading into the end of November, the first part of December, but I'll get into the milestones in just a moment. One of our jobs also is to support the department heads when we go into town deliberations. Although I'll have to admit, I was AWOL last year. But I think that the rest of the team members, Joe, Mitch, Luke, were here and I think that that worked out pretty well. I assume.
Mitch did a great job representing us.
Eventually, what we're going to do is we're going to put all of this data into an Excel spreadsheet. Now, this Excel spreadsheet's gonna be a little bit different than what we had last year. But I'll get into the details on that in just a little, a little bit. But the Excel spreadsheet is going to be what we use to consolidate all that information and provide immediate feedback in terms of what it is that we're buying, how much it is, and break it out by departments, break it out by priorities. And all that goes into the process of deciding what we can afford or what we need to present to the town for voting. And there's a lot of what ifs when we get to the end of the road. And that, that feature of using Excel will help us do that. Okay, next turn. In this Excel spreadsheet, you will find several years of data. First of all, we'll have historical data that includes twenty, twenty-one, twenty-two, and twenty-three in, in there for the budget numbers. But we'll only have the actual ending numbers for twenty-one and twenty-two simply because we haven't finished twenty-three yet. But we'll get to that by the, by the time we roll into December. Why is that important? We'll be looking at that to see if there are any major shifts upward or downward and just sort of keep an eye on where we're at in terms of the aggregate that we've executed in the past. Now, when I say that, don't, don't get excited. I realize sometimes new requirements come up and they have to be identified. But at least it's a baseline for at least a track to see how well we're doing from prior years. And, you know, everybody uses historical numbers as a comparative note.
Dennis?
Yeah.
Is there any way to get ten-year rolling data, ten-year average data, since that would give us also an idea of, of things that have a longer lifespan than just one or two years, each department?
I think the answer to that is yes, but not without a lot of work. What I mean by that, the way we got the numbers was taking each and every town report and physically pulling those numbers out so that we can do that comparative. So if we have twenty-one, two, and three, then we'll need to pick up seven more years. And I would assume it would be through the town report unless we can do that through a database somewhere. Debbie, I don't know. What, what do you think?
I'm not sure who was back that far. I don't think so.
Would our auditors be able to help us?
Dee, I think they're, they are trying to put notes. And every department head has the ability to tell them to put a note here that this is a once every fifteen years or what, whatever note that a, a department head would like to add to a budget line.
Right.
I think that's a kind of a.
And I think we're trying to, we're somewhat mixing still our CIP and our budgets, right? So that's why I'm, I'm trying to make sure that some expenses don't come up very often. And so looking at a fire truck, looking at cruisers, you know, that type of thing is just looking at one to two years of data isn't really gonna give us that ongoing historical cost.
That would be the CIP part of it though.
No, from a budget, from a budget perspective, there are things we might not have done during COVID that would show artificially low or high, you know, in any given time. So I just look at this move the date, but I don't think we're there.
Okay.
So we have three years of, of data right now. But the problem is, the tools we have today aren't user friendly. So we export them into a text file, delete five thousand spaces manually, and then import it into Excel. It's a nightmare to do. But we've got, we've got three years of data, so it will grow. But there's a new tool that, that, the town buy, that will prepare us better for the future.
Hopefully.
Hopefully in December.
Confident.
That would be nice.
Yes.
The only question to answer Dee's question would be, it's probably not going to have a look back. It's probably just gonna have a starting point and go forward.
It'll have a, they're gonna merge all the data that we have into the new software.
Okay.
So we can still have the look back.
Okay. So maybe the answer.
Because, because once, once we get the new system, we can't look back at the old stuff. So we gotta make sure that what they, what merges over is correct for starters. It's a whole thing, but yeah.
So maybe the answer to your question is maybe.
Yeah. I mean, it might, it might be an easier process once we get the new software. Right now, it's a nightmare just to get the basic budget.
But if, if there's gonna be a turnoff date, that, that's, that's concerning too. If the old system is gonna have a turnoff.
Yeah, well, we're gonna have to, we have to make sure that everything comes over.
Migration's over.
Yeah.
You also have.
When they do the migration, before we go live.
There's a whole library about that.
Yep. Yep, we all, we have all the town reports back to the eighteen hundreds, so.
Good.
Okay. And that sub bullet, next sub bullet, it talks about the 2024 budget worksheet. Just a note about that. And I did mention earlier that this spreadsheet is a little bit more intense than last year's model. But I do wanna say that if you are very familiar with Excel and are not frightened by formulas or pivot tables or something like that, you know, each of the FAC members will be more than happy to work with you to let you input that information. We have a, I call it a primer, I call it a primer that sort of talks about how you put data in there and the cautionary things. So I just make that known to you that if you wanna try that, that's fine. But the bottom line is, and I told all the FAC members on our last meeting, that we, the FAC, are ultimately responsible to provide correct data from you to the selectmen. But, you know, like I said, some of you may enjoy working with Excel. I kind of do. You're more than welcome to work with that directly. Or if you want to just put it out on a piece of paper or scratch it out, however you want, you know, we can take that data and put it in for you. But like again, we're not here to impede but to help facilitate getting that information forward, so.
Do we currently have the worksheet?
No.
Not yet.
Okay.
No. The FAC members have it. And when they start reaching out, sometime starting tomorrow, going forward in the next few days, they'll have that and can provide that to you if you wanna work with it.
Because I, I, I'm a paper trail person. I print everything. I was gonna kind of go by last year's budget and fill in what's been used because I save copies of like invoices and things like that, which will be helpful, I'm sure.
Definitely, definitely. Yeah. Documentation beats everything. You got it.
And I know a few departments are gonna add a couple of line items just to separate things out a little bit more.
And we encourage that because that makes it a lot easier to.
More detailed.
Yeah. And there's instructions, of course, the FAC members already know about this, but there's instructions on how to add additional lines as long as it's staying within that same accounting line. Because once it's summarized, it'll still come out to a summary number for that one specific account line or account number. The other thing is that this year, we started doing the quarterly budget review. Many of you have already been engaged in that. We're gonna continue to do that. The reason why we're doing that is we're trying to identify areas where, where we can see that we're either, either over or under budgeted or executed, I should say, and identify to the selectmen in a timely manner to say, you know, we may have some issues here. We may, you know, we're severely under-executed here or maybe we're over-executed here. But at least they would have enough time before we got to the end of the year that they could make some management decisions and coordinate with the department heads on what the fix is, if there is a fix. But at least knowing up in advance. Yes, ma'am?
I work in the accounting part too. And I just wanna say, doing this quarterly has been kind of awesome as much as it's a pain because it's a lot of work on me to fix things. It's been great to find, some of these are just, they were put in the wrong line item. It was just a simple fix. Or the account numbers for like, say, the electric bills are kind of wonky and they're not in the right places. So that's why they look off on almost every single department. So I was really happy to see that you guys, as much as I dread seeing them, I, I just want you to know how much it's gonna help at the end of the year.
Great.
Because we can kind of still remember things and bills and whatnot and where they came from, and we can fix them faster now.
Fixing them on the fly rather than trying to lump it at the end.
Right, it's easier to try to track it monthly or quarterly than it is to wait till the end of the year and say, what happened?
Right.
And then have to go search through a year's worth of data.
Exactly.
Which is overwhelming.
Yeah. It's overwhelming, well, yeah, it's overwhelming even quarterly, to be honest. But at least it's a huge step. But I just wanted to let you know that it actually is really great.
Thank you for that input. And the quarterly reviews in any organization is a key element of the budget management. It's not just a fire and forget. You put a number out there, I need this for this year, and forget about it till the end of the year. You gotta look at it, see how it's developing, whether it's going under, going above, finding where there's possibly areas of accounts being put in the wrong account line or whatever is, you pointed out.
I don't think that's ever been done either, has it?
I don't think so, not that I know of. Well.
That's my opinion.
Improvements every year.
Yeah, I love it. I think it's great.
Doing business better.
Yep.
Yeah, thank you.
Well, Mindy, we'll send you an occasional email just to let you know, everything's fine.
It's fine, it's fine, fine. So I keep saying to myself, I'm like, it's fine, everything's fine.
The first two quarters have been kind of rudimentary. You know, we're kind of collecting the data, finding some anomalies, pointing them out, and it's getting fixed. But as we move into this last quarter, where we still have one quarter that's unexecuted, that fourth quarter, at the end of the third quarter, we'll be able to see and apply that information and provide that to the selectmen and to the departments to decide how they wanna manage that. and provide that to the selectmen and to the departments to decide how they want to manage that. You don't want to go to the end of the year and find, oh, you've got fifteen, twenty thousand dollars left over without, you know, knowing about that in advance. Now, maybe a good reason for that, and it might be that it's applied to next year's tax rate reduction. But maybe there's other issues that need to be resolved within the town too that maybe the management decision may be a shift if it can't be executed. Excuse me. So we will continue to do that. Okay, next chart.
And if I could just, on that, at the point of the fourth quarter coming up, um, we're not looking to, we'd rather have money left over if possible than have it just spent out on things. Like trying to like spend out your bottom dollar budgets if it wasn't something that you'd budgeted for this year. You know, that would be something that you would mention to the FAC, hey, I have this left here. So I don't need to budget for it here. Is this something the select board would like done? Like, so those are the types of decisions that we'd like to be a part of for that, you know, end of the year budgeting.
So uncover the money for the following year.
Potentially, yeah, yeah, like to see how that can work out. Cause ideally, um, we're trying to go like on a true, like what the true budget is and not every year increase it by five or eight percent. You know, just like have it just creep up and creep up and copy the budget from last year and then just add five percent. Um, that's not what this is about. This is about trying to find the most fair system possible for, you know, the, our community members, which most of us are part of this, the same community and pay the, you know, these same taxes. Um, so we all have interest in this. Um, we have to find that balance, um, like with the tax rate and the service that we provide to the community.
This next chart, uh, for those of you that were involved in the budget development as a department head, you probably won't find a lot of changes. Most of the, most of the points of contact that we've aligned, all the fact members with each of the departments remain relatively unchanged with the exception of when we added Melissa. We kind of divvied up, uh, some of the departments to get her feet wet and get involved in some serious, uh, budget development workload. Uh, some of them are, you know, vital statistics is a pretty important piece there, special in, and, and, uh. Anyway, so most of them remain relatively unchanged, uh, from last year, but we have split up a little bit differently this year. So we'll just press forward that way. And Melissa, we've talked with her and Debbie and Lisa and, and as she gets her involved, her feet wet in that, then we'll work with her or you work with her. But it will come off just like it did last year when we were all sort of feeling our way around.
Right.
It'll, it'll work out, so. Any questions on the assignments? Okay. Next chart. Okay, as I mentioned, uh, develop that budget in any manner that you feel is easiest for you. This worksheet, this Excel spreadsheet is not designed to make your life harder or more complex or scare the bejesus out of you. So if you feel comfortable writing it out on a piece of paper, that's fine. You know, we'll take that information and we'll assimilate that into the worksheet. Again, if you're very adept at working with Excel, we'll have no problem handing over the spreadsheet to you and letting you fill it out until you find out, oops. Then the fact will jump in there and try to help fix it, so. The other thing, and I think somebody mentioned this, Debbie, I think. Even though you have one specific accounting line, that doesn't mean you need to just put one number in that accounting line. If you need to break it out, uh, let me, let me give an example. Let's say DPW is, and then as a, as an example. Peter, I know you've got, uh, a lot of, you know, maintenance expenses on trucks and stuff like that. But let's say, uh, this doesn't happen every year or every two or three maybe. But your dump truck hydraulic system blows out or something like that and you need to repair it. And that's a five or ten thousand dollar repair item or whatever. Then you might want to put that as a separate line so you can isolate that and show, you know, this is a considerable jump from last year, but at least you can explain, we know we got to get that hydraulic system fixed in it. So it's an easy way to identify what your real requirements are rather than just lumping everything into a big, big number and then trying to explain it. Cause it's sometimes harder that way. So you can add multiple lines as using the same account number if you wish. And as a matter of fact, in some cases it's preferred. So if you know that, uh, there's instructions on how you can add that. Sean mentioned this, uh, once you have all your requirements put into the Excel or we have it into the Excel, whoever has it in there. Once you've done that, then the next part of the process is categorizing it. Either category one, two, or three. And category one is the open the doors type stuff. You can't, unless you don't have it, you can't really do your job. Category two is, I call it the enhancing expense requirement for economies or efficiencies or doing your job better or whatever. Put that one in as a two and three is kind of like a wish list. You may have something that's coming up in the future. At least you identify it and give it up there for visibility. And we have those numbers from last year too. So some of those that came in at three, we can look back at some of our historical records to see if this is a recurring requirement or whatever. Again, documentation is key, right? We all understand that we're dealing with inflation, but we're not going to ask you to do inflated numbers. But if you feel like that your line item is susceptible to crazy inflation, just, we used to have a column for last year. We did away with that because we kind of really didn't use it that much. But if you feel like it is susceptible to inflation, just code it or identify that in your description. That's the last column that you'll see in there or for the fact, uh, they'll put it in there. And the other thing too is that when you put in, uh, an amount for a specific line item, the greater detail you can specify what it is that you're buying, the easier it is to identify, get approval and justify and press, press ahead. So use that last cell column to identify what your requirement is best you can. You don't have to write a book, just, you know, some triggering note.
Dan, can I ask a question?
Sure.
As far as the inflation, would you guys kind of guide that conversation? Cause maybe we don't know what would be susceptible, like yeah, asphalt or salt for the DPW or, you know what I mean? But like, I don't know.
Yeah.
Buy paper. I mean, you guys watch the finance world a lot more than we do. So like, we may not know what would be susceptible to.
Yeah, we look at.
How much of an equation, you know?
Some of those percentages that we got from last year, we got from the Bureau of Labor and Statistics.
Right, yeah, I remember you did that.
And that was kind of our baseline, but did we really use that? No, because what we were doing was, and I'll use DPW, not picking on Peter not, but what, in many cases we'll find that if we're using the twenty twenty-three as the baseline, let's say Peter has his contract or he has his proposal for his salt vendor and they've given him a price. Now, how they go about getting that, whether it's a, you know, it's a competitive price or not, I didn't get into that. But if that twenty twenty-three proposal states a certain amount and it was, and I use twenty twenty-three as an example, it went from eighty thousand to a hundred thousand dollars in one year, which was like, ooh, that's kind of a joke. But it was a documented, real cost, so that's inflationary.
Right.
It built, it's built into, into the spreadsheet as part of the baseline.
Right. Yeah, cause he had a quote for that. But I'm just saying, I think like paper and pens and ink and toner.
Yeah.
Office supply stuff like, I mean, yeah.
I think.
Envelopes, that'd be stuff we buy a lot of, but we don't.
You go through.
I mean, we don't know if Staples is going to jump their price or not, or, I mean, nobody does really. But I just didn't know, if you would kind of guide that conversation a little.
We didn't spend a lot of time on things like supplies, but we did spend a lot of time with things like fuel.
Yeah.
I don't understand how much, how much, how many gallons we buy.
Right.
And then we've got, yeah, the board is like, and they say, okay, here's what we use this year. Here's the price of fuel, what, what they predict it's going to be, let's budget this amount.
Right.
So the big dollar items, we've spent a lot of time discussing.
Which makes sense.
Yeah.
Sorry.
It's okay. No, it's good discussion. If we come up across some issues that we see as we're developing a budget, we see a tremendous increase from a prior year, a prior year's budgetary requirement. We'll take a look at it and see if that's inflationary or if that's just additional requirement, which it could be just additional requirement as well.
Yep.
Okay.
Cool.
Okay, so I talked about using current cost as a baseline. And that would include any existing proposals or contracts that you have that you could execute against. But don't inflate the dollars yourself, because if you do that, then we don't have a common core baseline to look at inflationary issues. Okay. Any questions on that chart? Next chart. Excuse me again. Okay. We had a real interesting discussion last year on COLA and it caused us to do some major surgery on how we were developing our budget. And as a result, one of the big changes that we have in the Excel spreadsheet is now completely integrated cost of living adjustment factor for every single employee. What, what, what do I mean by that? When you develop your budget, look at your employee costs first. Why do I say that? Because that really is the essence, that in most cases, that's the largest expense of any organization. But you look at that first by identifying who your employee, not necessarily by name, but by position. Identify what the salary base is, uh, what kind of benefits they're going to receive. Some of that is based on, uh, policy such as, you know, eighty-five percent or an eighty percent employee of full time will or will not, or less than, will not receive, uh, full time benefits. So it, it, it depends on the employee. But if you identify the employee, it will go through and calculate all those, not only just the employee's salary, but it also will calculate the insurance, the retirement, Medicare, FICA, health, life insurance, dental, what did I miss?
Retirement.
Retirement, retirement. It'll calculate all that for you. Boom, done. And then on top of that, if there's any issues of cost of living that we need to entertain at the end of the year, which we, last year, based on last year's experience, we took a look at that at the very end to figure out, we knew we had to do a cost of living adjustment based on the available information we had. We did some what if drills on what percentage we could raise that up for the cost of living. Once we have that, the benefit for this Excel spreadsheet is, let's say if we start out with a zero cost of living, which is our twenty twenty-three baseline. And let's say if we increase it by three percent, it's just a matter of simply putting in a three percent rate in one cell and it'll calculate for every single employee within the town and give you a new number. So we kind of jumped through the hoop on that a couple of times last year. Hopefully we won't have to do that again this year.
How valuable is that? However, question. Last year, it was, you know, we had talked about doing, uh, whatever percent cost of living across the board. And then at kind of the eleventh hour, we took out the stipend and kept it to salary slash hourly. So that needs to be made clear to all the department heads this year too. Like if that, you know, I, one department in particular hadn't had a raise in, I don't know how many years and thought they were getting the cost of living and then didn't find out till April that they weren't. So we need to make sure that going forward, like this is how much I need or want or whatever. And, and, you know, no cost of living, this is, this is the bottom line now.
Yeah, so I'd say.
Am I making sense?
The stipend positions by and large should make that request directly. That's why they weren't.
Right.
Yeah.
Right, but they weren't, that wasn't communicated to them.
Okay.
So they didn't realize they weren't getting the cost of living because they were told they were gone.
Do you really?
But then at the eleventh hour, it was decided that not to do it, so nobody knew about it. So, I mean.
Being a stipend, they are, they can come forward and ask for way more than a COLA increase.
Right.
They feel like they haven't had enough money for ten years.
Right.
Yeah, that's, that's their prerogative.
Yeah, which is historically how it's, has been going. But when we started at the beginning, we said, they're going to get the cost, everybody's going to get the cost of living, whatever that may be.
Correct.
And then it was changed at the very end and nobody was told about it.
So it sounds to me.
Unless you watched the selectmen's meeting, it was decided.
Sounds to me like what we need.
Communication.
Sorry. We need a policy decision. Does stipends, is that inclusive of cost of living or not and let everybody know?
Right.
Well, I would say not because it's a, it's not a true.
Employee.
Employee position, like you're getting that, like that fixed payment. Whereas all the other scenarios include like some type of hourly or salary, regular pay.
Okay.
Structure to it. So that's why I would ask like for the stipend, you know, positions to please, you know, as you're working through the FAC, um, if you're looking to increase what your stipend is, make that request and we'll see that.
Okay.
I agree.
All right.
I think that's the best way.
Individually then, I guess, huh?
Sorry.
Collectively.
Only for stipends.
Yeah, for stipends.
And we had two questions.
Yeah.
So you can answer mine. Mine, we have a, some mix of stipend positions as well as hourly, hourly positions. So it's a matter of the hourly is getting the COLA, the stipends are not.
You're fired, right?
Yep.
Okay.
So our deputy chiefs are stipends, the rest of the staff is hourly.
Although you do have staff that get both.
And we do have staff that get both.
The other thing to consider is the stipends may be part of the charters. They may not just be budgetary. So, you know, we should identify which things are part of our traditional, like what provides for the stipends. And I think tracing those back would be really important. Like the planning board doesn't have a stipend, but the zoning board does.
No, zoning board, assessors do.
Okay.
Assessors is the only board, yeah.
So the assessors do. Again, where does that come from? Tracing it all the way back is going to give the authority of who can change it. Cause I doubt some of these are purely budgetary.
I have no idea. I don't know where they came from. I don't know why assessors is the only board that gets paid and the others don't.
We do. We get the stipend.
Right.
I think the moderator is paid by stipend, is it?
Yep.
And I think where it is.
Yeah.
So again, where did, and help is, where did those come from? Did they come from our charters? Do they come from a warrant article? I'm not sure these are purely budgetary.
Yeah, and on that note, I think that was why we came, a big reason why we came to that decision.
Right.
Was we're like, we're not going to give ourselves a raise.
Right.
So, but it had affected everyone.
Right.
Lesson learned.
Yeah, and it was just a communication thing, I think, yes.
So based on what I heard, just in this last discussion, it's going to be based on the department heads' assessment of what that stipend payout should be for that individual. Is that correct? of what that stipend payout should be per that individual, is that correct?
Yeah, that's, I request that.
So it sounds to me just like a policy decision we just made.
You can't just make a policy decision right now.
Well.
Unless it's status quo, which is what it is.
You can ask people to suggest and then figure out how your policy is going to run.
In terms of developing the budget, you need to have some kind of guidelines to build it. And we don't need to be changing stuff in the middle of the stream. So I call it a policy, policy decision for purposes of this budget build. Fair enough?
I think I would call it a procedure.
Okay, fine, whatever. Whatever. Okay, next chart. Debbie, I think this is still correct where we're excluding this from the operating budget, is that correct?
All the warrant articles.
Is that what this?
I don't know what outdoor lighting.
I think we need to delete that, leave that off the list, because that's when we did budget the electricity for the street lighting.
Oh.
We're not, yeah, that was a mistake from last year. So that, that won't, that'll go away on the slide.
Yeah, so the rebuild's a warrant article, ambulance is a warrant article.
I think the landfill cap is done.
But we have one more loan payment on that. But we, but we have to, we have to test every year forever and ever into eternity.
Does that come out of the budget?
So I think it does, because it's not a warrant article. The library is a warrant article. They put their own request in. I don't know why outdoor lighting is on there at all.
I think that was street lighting.
Also, you said it was an error.
Do they have a street light, street?
Yeah, there's a lot. They're pretty annoying when it's foggy.
Right.
You can't see.
I know.
We take a look at this, tidy it up, and if we need to put something, then we'll put it back into the mix if, if needed. So that's a do-out, right? Or do-in or whatever.
It is a line item.
Revaluation, is something that comes up every four years?
Five.
Five years. So that should be, so that should be coming up for 2024.
It's a warrant article every year.
Right, but down the fifth year, it's more.
Yeah, well, that's, it just, it's excluded from our core budget, so it's a warrant article. So things on this list, they're all warrant article driven.
Not in, not in our budget.
So it's not a budget item.
So to give a little background, the original reports had revaluation mixed in with the landfill cap testing, sanitation hazardous waste. They were mixed in with the line items that we were working closely. So we went through last year and said, we're not addressing this one, this one, or this one. Now I think it's cleaned up.
Yeah.
I think we're good. We just had the issue with the outdoor lighting last year. And we'll look at the landfill cap testing, because if that's an annual fee, that's probably a budgeted item.
Yes, sir.
Okay. All right, next chart. This is the milestones, hopefully we can keep to it. And this goes back to what I said earlier about being timely and responsive to the FAC members and to the boss. One of the things that we ran into last year was we had some late breakers at the very end of this hall. After we assembled all of the budget information, we had some late breakers in it. It was like kicked over the can, kicked over the apple cart, and the apples were flying all over the place and we had to build it back together again. So what I'm saying is, let's, let's try to stay to this as much, as closely as we can. That includes, starts out with today. We've got the meeting between tomorrow and roughly the middle of October. We're going to go dealing directly with each of the department heads to start building this budget, to get our baseline draft together. And then near that following week, we'll try to finalize that amongst the department heads. And then we'll get all those requests put in there, finalized, put into the spreadsheet. And then between the 24th of October and the 6th of November, the department heads and the FAC, then we'll review those documents to consolidate that into the FAC worksheet. On November the 7th, we'll start reaching out directly with the Board of Selectmen with that information. They'll start seeing that, they'll start getting visibility of it. And then they'll know kind of what you're looking for, what you're asking for, the amounts that are involved. If there's questions, I know that we had some meetings that occurred between roughly the middle of November and somewhere roughly the middle of December, where we had the department heads and the FAC sit before the selectmen and answer questions. That still remains, and I don't know if we're going to do that by all departments or by exception. But either way, we'll work with them. But as long as you have the information that you need.
Can we get a copy of this, the timeline?
Yes, as a matter of fact, what I will do is I will send out. I don't have everybody's email address. What I can do is I can send it to Debbie and she can shot-gate it.
Okay, beautiful.
So that was my question. Can I, I was just going to take that one slide, send it to everyone.
Perfect.
People who did come tonight, people who didn't come tonight.
Perfect.
And request that they have a timely response when you guys email us.
That way, yeah, we can stay on track.
Yes.
So we know what's expected, what we've got to get ready and so on.
Yeah.
All right.
Sounds great. By the middle of December, we want to have our final product to the selectmen so that they can ready for the deliberation, the town voting that starts in January through March. And I know it's monthly segments as it goes through the process. But they also need this information too, to help build their story, to sell it to the town. Last year was a gargantuan feat, because I know that the budget jumped up quite a bit in terms of percentage, but because you were armed with that information, it sold. And the town understood, and that's part of building a budget. If you're going to ask for more money, it needs to be understood and explained. And once it's explained, then the voter can decide, yeah, that's, that's reasonable. Or no, it's not. But it's an informed decision, that's the point. Okay? Okay. Next chart is questions and answers.
Ooh, look at that timing.
I did that in one hour. Not bad.
Don't make us tiny, 57 minutes.
Only three minutes.
I thought you were going to reach you about high five U.
We're going to hold it to every minute.
I'm glad to see so many of you came out this evening, particularly the, I'll say the big hitters, the big ticket items. Are there any questions that you have of us, the FAC, or the selectmen, or just comments that would be good for the general consensus of everyone? Dee?
It may help everybody to know that this year, the FAC is going to help us collect information for the capital improvement program. As we're going into a master planning year, the master plan drives where the town wants to go. You then set your capital improvement things, which is over $5,000, based on where the town wants to go. So it doesn't make sense for us to do a full CIP this year because we're going into a master plan. So we, we should kind of be saying, how, what's outstanding? Right now, we don't have a lot of outstanding projects that are actually scoped, capital improvement projects. We have things that are somewhat ortho. I'm going to use an example of a pavilion down at the, at the rec area, or the soccer field's being developed, or things like that. We have the landgram, but we haven't developed those fields. Those are, they don't have a champion, and they may have a kind of a department that they belong to, and they may have an intermittent champion, but we, we haven't gotten that, that really good cadence of planning. And how do we bring projects to fruition? We tend to focus on the, on the things like the vehicles and the equipment. And so going forward, just so you know, our goal is, there are some things, police cars, dump trucks, fire trucks, they're almost operational capital, capital things. We shouldn't be spending a lot of time on, if we get the formulas right and everything like that, the, the stuff should just be operational, should go forward over time. The other things, so my goal for this year is, at the end of the year, we're going to be able to level all of that out with the, with the FAC and the selectmen, and to make recommendations about how do we kind of go forward and reset some things. Then going into, as we go into the master plan, we'll reset some of those other projects. I'm going to take all the stuff on the police station out for a while. We have a staple police station for a few years. Instead of having 12 different maybe plans, take them off until we know where people want to go with some of this stuff. So you, what, what you'll see at the end of the year will almost be an operational CIP, the things that are over $5,000 that we just have to do ongoing because they're part of who we are. Then we can do additional projects beyond that, that a lot of which have just kind of fallen off a little bit. So that's, but we're going to do a cleanup here. So you're going to see additional numbers that if you have anything that says CIP next to it, feel free to give me a buzz as well, or these guys will pass on some of the information. They're going to be doing some of the data collection so that we can close one as we're starting that next master plan.
Okay. Any other questions, comments, points?
Just to make a couple of comments. Time goes by really quickly, and we know everybody is very busy. And you have lives outside of your responsibilities to the town as well. I just want to point out that the, in terms of the milestones, we're talking about approximately five weeks to have your first draft of the budget done. So try not to put it off. And if you find yourself getting bogged down or not having sufficient time in your own estimation of getting the work done, please contact your FAC member who can step in and provide additional support and help to get things done. Okay, sometimes some of that information can be even done over the phone. Doesn't always require a face-to-face meeting. And if you do it in small little chunks, I suspect you'll have no problem getting it done and meeting the milestones. And just to kind of reiterate one thing that Dennis said, these budgets are your budgets. You know your departments, you know what the needs are, and you, I'm sure anticipate what the future needs will be. Our role is simply to be able to gather the information and make sure that it gets into the Excel sheet appropriately, correctly, clarify with you, have we done it well? So when you review it, you can let us know if we have missed something and be able to provide that information to the VOC. And also advocate for you, because I know for instance, well, for all of us last year, because of the time we spent with every department head and explanations were given, why monies were being requested for particularly a line item, we understood it really well. So when it came to presenting it to the board, whether the department head was present or not, we could speak on your behalf. We could explain it and advocate for your needs. So if we ask a lot of questions, I want it to be understood that we're not challenging you or asking you to defend it. We're asking you to educate us so that we can be another voice for your department.
I'm also going to send out, in that same email, I'll send out that chart that lists everybody and who's what department they're doing. And all, and all your contact information.
Great. There's one other comment. I, I think I may have touched on it, but I want to make sure this is crystal clear. It is not our intent as FAC members to constrain any of your budget, identified budget requirements. What do I mean by that? I mean that if you have a requirement, put it on the budget requirements list. But by the same token, that I expect all the departments working with the FAC members will do a good job in identifying those priorities too. Everything can't be a number one. I mean, fact of life, just can't be. But I just want to make sure that's crystal clear. Put it all down there. We're not constraining it, but we need to prioritize it properly.
It goes back to what Sean said.
Yeah.
Best value.
Absolutely.
All the way around.
Any other questions? Thank you for coming out, everyone. And looking forward to another fun five months of budget.